It is six o'clock, our full meeting of the Masonan and Village Board's orders. We have it properly posted on eight fifty-five, phone call.
Sarah?
Here.
Here. Peterson?
Here.
Middleton?
Here.
Sander?
Here.
Schlam?
Here.
Springsteen?
Here.
We have the whole house. Item four, additions or corrections to the agenda, if not, is there a motion to approve?
Motion approved.
By Jeff? By Scott, discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by the same sign, that motion is carried. Item five, improvements from the last regular board meeting.
Question different.
By Jeff? By Jerry, discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by the same sign, that motion is carried. Item six, appearances and significant correspondence. And two people have registered, and I don't see anybody else in the audience who necessarily need to. First, we have Rob Westwood.
Good afternoon, all of you. All right, thank you for letting me speak last night. I'm from Cross Plains, and I'm working with Project Recovery. You may have seen our flyers around, we've had representatives here in the past. You may know me sitting back there taking notes, I write for the local newspaper, Star News. And since I've been covering the news in the area and learning more about the flooding and the repercussions of everything that's been happening in the community, I've started working with this organization. And their, their goal is to help people who have been through the floods, who have received help but can use a little more help or support. Sometimes it's emotional support, sometimes also meeting with people who know other people who need help, who have been through the floods. We do have a meeting tomorrow night at six o'clock in Black Earth, at their, their city, our village offices there. If you know of anybody who could use some support, I can either talk to them individually, or they're welcome to come and join us at six o'clock tomorrow night. Thank you.
Next speaker is Walter Peterson. This one interests me, wants to talk about a stove. And I don't care how interesting, there's your limited freedom.
All right, well, just to start things off, if somebody were to donate a stove to the village, were used as a community building, would the village accept it? The background on that is that this lovely harvest gold stove that is there probably dates back to nineteen eighty-two or earlier. And there's been discussion within EMS of, we use that thing once a year. Why not donate that to the village?
It's not going to be an eighty-three model, is it?
No, it was a team going with something absolutely random. I don't know, maybe you did an agenda, it has to be on the agenda.
I think on something like this, we could gain a consensus of more. Would we accept a gift of a stove at a community building? I see nodding heads, thank you for suggesting this.
Kind of a part B to that is that the range hood that is above that stove is also a lovely harvest gold color. It doesn't do anything because there's no venting for it, but it looks matching. Would you accept leaving that there with an unmatched new stove? Or do you need a new range hood?
Anything?
I think we can find some donated money for a matching. If the EMS will buy the stove, we'll find some money for the hood, if you want.
Okay. We'll continue, I won't take you after our next EMS meeting, but I think it's going to pass.
Thank you. Delhi EMS members, thank you.
Yep, I'll do that.
Okay, anyone else that wants to speak on anything that is not on the agenda? If not, we'll move to item seven, Village President's report. And I have nothing in this meeting. I have made Village Administrator's report, it's in your packet. Questions, so Peter?
That bug tussle thing, Peter?
Yes, sir.
Said they doubled it?
Almost doubled it, yeah.
We're looking for? I, I don't remember what we were looking for.
Well, we didn't set, we, we asked for what was at the, the tower next to them, which is twelve hundred bucks, and they were asking, they were offering three hundred. So they almost doubled it, but they've also increased the, the three percent increase every year instead of every five years that they had before. But I sent the paperwork to Phil Cole for him to take a look, see if anything else had changed. They did accept some of the other things that we had in the offer also.
So they're moving?
They're moving, yeah. And actually, I got an email today asking if I got the email and to let them know as soon as we decide anything, as soon as our lawyers see stuff that they want to talk about some more.
Thank you.
One thing on the Administrator's report, you'll see mentioned about the Agribusiness Grant Program, saying it's about an inch thick, this is the application that it's saying. Bring a visual aid for everybody. That's for the acquisitions and buyouts.
I've got kind of a quick question for you, Peter, maybe. Is, could you, as significant progress is being made on the buyouts and stuff like that, could you maybe send out an email or something to the affected people?
We could, unfortunately, the significant progress we've been hearing about is like months, six months down the road. But yeah, we would definitely want to keep in touch with everybody.
Because sometimes we just kind of feel in the dark a little bit.
Yeah.
So do we?
Well, I understand you're dealing with the federal government.
Well, first we're dealing with the state, then the federal government, so we're not going to hear anything until probably the fall from the state, and then we hear from FEMA after that.
Hey, I was a state bureaucrat, I understand.
Peter, I have one other question. The CBBG funds, is that what we, we weren't able to get before? Is this us tapping into these funds?
Well, because we're, it's handled through Dane County because we're an entitlement community. Their application is end of, I think it's mid-May that we have to have everything in, but that's for next year. But this is going to work out perfect because that's when the acquisitions are going to be happening. So, so I'm working with Dale, and we're going to get an application in for those funds for next year. But yeah, we couldn't get anything immediately from that. Had it been a local program, and Dale's used to working with that, other communities would be able to get that money still.
Other questions, so Peter? If not, we'll move to item nine, Deputy Deputy Sergeant.
So just a reminder from last month when I spoke, pages one and two are total calls and citations to the village for the total of the month of March. And pages three and four are contract deputy only calls and citations. As you can see, the total number of calls are a hundred and ninety-eight. Actually, after presenting these numbers at last month's meeting, I kind of questioned the accuracy of some of the numbers reported on, on this report, as I have recalled doing certain incidences more than what was reported on the report. So I emailed our crime analyst and asked him about my observation of the potential inaccuracy of some of these numbers. And he said that essentially, anything that occurs within the village limits will only be reported on this. So for instances like, you know, a suspect flees the village of Mesa, and I arrest them in the township of Mesa, that arrest number is not going to show up on here. So I emailed him two examples of instances like that, where maybe a license plate was ran here in town, and the driver had a warrant or something. Well, if I don't stop the car until we're out of the village, that number isn't going to show on the report. So I just want to caution you to the future of looking at these numbers, that sometimes they are going to be inaccurate. Couple of other things aside from the statistics that I wanted to just put on your guys' radar from the police department. In the month of May, I'll be starting our first police department newsletter. With the help of Peter, I got an email address, a village email, that people can sign up on. It's intended to just be a seasonal type newsletter, events, things happening around town from the police department, reminders, stuff like that. Also, I'll be teaming up with the fire department and EMS, and starting a Masonan Public Safety Night, which will be one night a month. Again, this is all in planning, but my thought is having it one night per month during the school year, so September to May, and that'll start in the fall. Details are really kind of fogging in that right now, because obviously it's in the planning stages, but just kind of wanted to throw it out there, so.
Sounds great.
How about you, Carol?
Thanks.
More listening, because they said they really heard part of the stuff on that. But yeah? I can't see why I wouldn't be.
Okay. Items ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, our second meeting of the month. Item fourteen, Lake Marion update.
Not sure if I recorded this at the last month. The aquatic planting is tentatively scheduled for late June. The Sportsman's Club did rebuild the fishing pier on Saturday.
Oh, really?
Looks good. Otherwise, no changes currently.
What is fish stocking? When in the year is that?
We were looking at fall for that.
Did you say you were going to remove a board? At the last meeting, you said you were going to remove a board and kind of see how it went out there?
I did.
You didn't thought of that? Everything cool?
Yep. The, the stone that was placed around the perimeter of the lake is, the water level was intended to be in the middle of that stone, and we were at the top of it, so we did lower it probably between eight and ten inches. It's staying there, so. I have had a few people contact me concerned that the lake dropped.
Oh, no.
Sure.
I wasn't at the last meeting to give the update on Dana, but one thing that did happen at Dana, Iowa there, just want to make you guys aware, is Pat Frye has asked to be allowed to design. He is the president right now of it. He's also the public member at large, so he's from all, all the communities. I just want to let you guys know that. So he's willing to stay on until we can find a replacement for him. That's something that the commission finds, is that for the public person at large. But just to let you know, because he was the president of the commission.
Okay, item fifteen, there was no meeting of Mesa twenty twenty. Item sixteen, Peter tells me next meeting, there will be a report on violations of property ordinances. Item seventeen, flood update.
It's basically a waiting game right now. We've got this into Wisconsin Emergency Management, and then FEMA. We have been putting in, pretty much got all our information in for the public assistance, which is the money coming back to the village for infrastructure. There's five different projects, five different project categories, and one category we've already sent in for final approval, and have not heard back on that. Once the final approval is, that's when the money can start being sent to us. There's, our project managers still working on the other four categories.
Where are we on creek cleanup work?
Just going to end that conversation. So Kevin Stotts was approved to be the contractor that the village used, and he has the bulk of that, probably ninety percent of the work done.
Any other questions on flood update? We have no items of bold business, so we're into new business. Item one, adoption of resolution twenty nineteen dash one, to vacate and abandon the alley in the original platte of the village of Masonan. So this is the, the item that has been published in the local paper three times. It was first introduced on March twelfth. We read the resolution at that time. This happens to be the vacation of that portion of Eldred Street coming over the bank and the Tom Logan's property.
Well, it's not, it's not Eldred Street, it's an alley that goes through there.
Okay.
But Eldred Street is actually where the electric banks, the transformers and stuff are. And that's why they didn't want to vacate that. But this is, this is just an alley that goes through.
Thank you for clarifying. Do you want this read through the record? If necessary?
Same thing as the last, the last meeting.
Okay.
So.
So we introduced it on March twelfth, it's been published in the local paper three times. Is there a motion to adopt this resolution?
Yes.
By Les?
Second.
By Natalie, discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by the same sign, that motion is carried. Move on to item two, resolution to update Wisconsin Public Employers Health Insurance Program. I'll read this one for the record. Resolved by the Village Board of the Village of Masonan, pursuant to the provisions of Wisconsin Statute forty point fifty-one sub seven, hereby determines to continue with the Wisconsin Public Employers Group Health Insurance Program that is offered to eligible personnel through the program of the State of Wisconsin Group Insurance Board, and agrees to abide by the terms of the program to set forth in the Local Employer Health Insurance Standards Guidelines and Administration Manual. We will continue to participate in the program option in which we are currently enrolled. If we wish to elect a new program option for twenty twenty, we will file a separate resolution to do so. All participants in the WPE Group Health Insurance Program need to be enrolled in a program option. Individual employees cannot choose between program options. The resolution must be received by the Department of Employee Trust Funds as soon as possible, but later than October one, in order to continue participation without lapse. The proper officers are here with authorized and directed to take all actions and make salary deductions for premiums and submit payments required by the board to provide such group health insurance. All those in favor of adopting the resolution signify by saying aye. Any other motion? I read it. By Scott, discussion. All those in favor of a motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by the same sign, that motion is carried. Item three, approve electric engineering contract for Highway fourteen project. And you had in your packet proposal from Forster Electrical Engineering. This is our engineering firm for electrical utility, our electric utility.
There's some titles at the bottom, because they're going to work on Highway twelve.
Highway twelve. They did have a hard time finding the intersection of twelve and Broadhead, yeah. So Forster is submitting a proposal to provide engineering design services for new street lighting along US Highway should be fourteen between Walter Road and County Trump KP. His proposal assumes the work will be done in conjunction with the Wisconsin DOT Highway Improvement Project in twenty twenty-one. And that the detailed electronic highway plan drawings in AutoCam format will be made available by DOT for use of its lighting plan drawings. All plan specifications and related work will be prepared for inclusions into this project. Engineering assistance during bidding and construction will be made available on a timely material basis. They will invoice the village for the time required to perform the work described at their standard billing rates at an estimated cost of thirty-two thousand dollars. The following items were not included, future traffic light systems at Highway fourteen and Broadhead, future traffic light systems at Highway fourteen and Walter Road, multiple future pedestrian crossing, flashing beacons along Highway fourteen. So the question for the board is, and this is something that will be pigged in twenty twenty-one, do we need to engage them now to begin work? Is there a motion to approve?
Question, Chris?
Yes, go ahead.
I'm not sure they allow to be offered, they're asking about.
Mark, Sean?
Is that built in any place?
I think for what, for what we're asking of them at the moment, I think that's all considered.
They come back and say forty-two, is that, that's way out of line.
Should be fairly accurate. This engineer, Patrick Teddy with Forster, that is his specialty. He does lighting for that firm, and so it should be a fairly accurate number. And in addition to that, the timeline on this is pretty short. DOT is looking for this design information next week, which won't happen that fast, but, you know, we've been waiting for them since two thousand and six, and now they want our design work.
The board could also, in their motion, say if it goes over thirty-two thousand dollars, they just come back to the board.
Is there a motion to add to that?
Yes, sorry.
So the motion of this is to approve the use of Forster Engineering at a price not to exceed thirty-two thousand. And then if it is to exceed thirty-two, they would come back to the board. Let's make the motion, Scott seconded, discussion.
That doesn't include any of these, these, we're going to have to get other bits.
That would be a change order to this project. The pedestrian lighting is not figured in, it's something the village has expressed an interest in. There's also been discussion here about traffic lighting at Walter Road. The state is resistant to that. Should the wiring for that traffic lighting get incorporated into the project, the design would be additional cost. We can address that when we get to it, I think. We need to deal with the lighting right now.
We are going to have a light at fourteen and Broadhead.
That's a state and county.
It says future traffic light system, so they're, what they're implying is that you would put, you would beef up the infrastructures for future changes? Or does it mean traffic light?
The reason those are separated out, the traffic lighting at Highway Y and Highway fourteen are both state and county owned highways, roadways. So they, to my knowledge, should not be a village expense, should be a state-owned expense. Walter Road would be a different story.
That's just confusing, I don't know what it says, that Wisconsin DOT is determined that Mesa will be responsible for these three.
Well, once the, the, the lighting, also, the lighting, what's the, the state will pay for half of the lighting, has to be built to their spec, but when the project is done, we are the owners. It's, and it's that way, or it's none? It's the only way to do it? Is that accurate?
Absolutely.
Further questions or discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. And those opposed by the same sign, that motion is carried. Sean, this is, this is not on the agenda, but we won't discuss anything. But anything further on charter with their lines, are they?
He called me at four o'clock today, he was actually out in front of the village hall looking at him, trying to get a game plan for how we're going to revolve their stuff.
Good job.
Hope that's moving forward.
Good job. Okay, item four, new business, approve hiring Charles Mulley, the seasonal public works position at a salary of fourteen dollars an hour. I'll put Mark on this. Chuck works with Public Works during the flooding, and Mark speaks highly of Chuck's work ethic, is recommending his hiring.
I'll make a motion to approve.
By Natalie. Second by Ray, discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, same sign. Motion is carried. We're into committee. Personnel, I have nothing at this time. Two, public works and property, nothing, nothing. Ray, parks and rec.
Sorry, we have stuff. We met, on the, on our agenda was a dog park, and we shared information. Mark's getting some bids on possible fencing site, possibly should be brushed up, ever moved. That would be what we felt would be a good location. Of course, we don't have to make any decisions on that right now. Lake Marion, so the question was swimming or not. Unfortunately, so Les and I are probably on different pages on this. So he's always wrong, by the way. So anyway, Natalie had the childcare, and she left, so we were, we moved.
A week early.
So we, it was just Les and I, but my suggestion was that this year, due to the new banks, all the money that we put into it, that we refrain from allowing swimming there this year, and that we revisit that again next spring, get an idea of how the aquatic planning has done, and then decide whether we want swimming or not.
Can I interrupt you?
Yeah.
Because I asked Mark to contact the company that provided us the ESS thirteen and get their recommendation as to whether we should allow any swimming. So Mark, go ahead.
So I did contact Seapage Control and asked for their recommendation, and they said that the liner that was constructed in the lake, for the most part, has six inches of cover material on that. And if you had an area that was concentrated as a swimming area, beach area, it could be detrimental to that liner over time. The area where the Kijun kayak landing has additional cover with sand, that would not be as mu, that wouldn't be a problem, because it has more cover. The lake in general, they would discourage it.
Isn't that unique that we would ask the experts for information before we make a decision? So there we go.
We have. An answer. I can't do it.
Do we need, but I think what, what we really wanted was, Les and I were in disagreement. I thought we should have a sign that says, no swimming. And Les thought, well, I don't want to put words in your mouth. You thought we didn't need a sign, is that right?
We didn't want to put words in your mouth. You're always putting words in my mouth.
Am I right? You didn't, I think that we, that Mark would like, we would like some, I would like some kind of sign down there that tells people that they shouldn't swim and are really valuable.
Two words.
I'll make a motion that we have, or no swimming. But we, I think we need a board action.
We can, we can schedule that for the next meeting, soon.
I think it's on here, it's on there, it's on.
All right.
Am I right?
If someone says we can do it, we can, we can, we can accept a motion to.
And how far apart do the signs have to be? Yeah, you had to circle the lake with those.
Sure. What I was proposing in the park meeting, if I may, was a larger sign at each parking lot that just gave general park guidelines, no glass bottles, no swimming, pick up after your dog, leash or no leash, whatever the policy is. That, that's what I was looking to do.
Good idea. That would catch the trail coming, coming from town, and.
We already have a sign or two that says no hunting.
So Mark has recommended two signs with a listing of dudes and adults, including no swimming.
I'll make that a motion.
By Jerry?
Second.
By Natalie. Discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, that motion carries.
Also, the agenda was a basketball court, and Mark believes that that can be handled with excess asphalt after road repair for basically no cost to the village. But we would need, well, I don't know what we would need on that. The idea was to put it at Appleby Circle, and both Peter and Mark have driven around, and that looks like the best place, we don't have a basketball court.
and that looks like the best place. We don't have a basketball court on that side of the highway. It would be a half court, basketball court. Would not probably draw a lot of people, but it would be a nice amenity to have. Do we need, how, how do we go about adding to a park? Do we inform the neighbors? Do we not inform the neighbors?
We can if you want, but it's, it's a park.
Yeah, it's a park, kind of. We built this flash pad. We didn't call the neighbors first. It's a park. They expect that.
Yeah. You should do it correctly. Okay. So I don't know if we need board approval for that either, do we?
The only.
We do?
We need, I, I did say that if we incorporate that work into our street projects, that we can maybe do it for little or no cost, but I can't promise that it will be a hundred percent free. There is a fund that has money for these type of developments. So I guess one item that I would like to address is permission to use that fund to pay expenses that could arise in that project.
For construction of a basketball court in the Appleby Circle?
Yeah, my intent would be for us to do the grading in-house and then when the street gets paved, if there's an additional cost, we would pay for the asphalt out of that. If not, there's no cost.
And this is a recommendation from the park committee?
And I didn't even put it in the minutes, so I should probably amend our minutes. We did not have a recommendation on that because we are only two people. So, am I right?
Yeah, my only concern was that we should contact the people who live in Appleby Circle and let them know what we're doing. Because all of a sudden, there's gonna be a dozen kids up there making noise at what, I mean, let's say, you can't be up there at ten o'clock at night making a bunch of noise. Other than that?
Does someone wanna make motion to construct a basketball court in Appleby Circle?
I make a motion.
By Jeff?
Second.
Second by Natalie. Discussion. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those saying the same, motion is carried.
The last thing we had was a U T V purchase to do maintenance in our parks. And Mark would like to access the new Parkland money combined with funds accumulated from, well, I should let you go ahead, but.
Well, that is the discussion we had. And Sue had pointed out that, that, that fund is not intended for equipment. It's for park equipment in the existing subdivisions.
It's park improvements. But you said it could be applicable to Lions Park as well, right?
Right. And can be used for this basketball court because that's an actual park improvement, not maintenance equipment.
This was a budget item last year that didn't make it through the budget. But we now have the position we need. It's a needed piece of equipment. We have, we still have money in a fund from auction proceeds from the sale of old equipment and more than enough to make this purchase. So I guess that's my request.
Is this enough?
Yeah, it's been on the agenda since early.
All right, so the request is to use money from the sale of used equipment that would sit in an auction proceeds account, purchase U T V for park maintenance purposes.
So.
By Jerry.
Second.
By Les. Discussion.
Is it possible at the end of budget, we allotted an additional two thousand dollars to parks that we were talking about doing that rescue boat, but then we allocated it to the three different areas? Is it possible to use some of that money to compensate this and then use the lieu of Parkland money to buy some of the equipment that we had planned on using that two thousand dollars for? I mean, since the equipment's being used for the park itself?
It's in the budget.
I mean, I remember like when we were talking about the rescue boat and then we decided not to do that. We have to leave that additional money. We had a little bit left over and I think a, a nice little chunk went into the parks account. So I'm wondering if, because then you could still have some seed money in your auction account to buy additional equipment if it's used for the park management.
Do you wanna amend your motion to that effect?
Yes.
Okay, no, but what, how much money are we using? Nothing in little park land money?
So I'm not on finance. I don't understand.
Some general fund, park money.
Oh, general fund, park money.
It was in the budget. I don't remember how much it is. It's around a thousand dollars, fifteen hundred, something like that. It was put in there.
So the motion then is to use funds from the auction proceeds account at Public Works Hall and.
General fund money.
General fund money for the park, or that, it's either thousand, fifteen hundred or two thousand. Between Sue and Peter, they hold that up. So use that first, use the auction proceeds second. Jerry's amending her motion. Les is amending his. Second, is there a discussion?
And it's the purchase.
U T V.
U T V.
Hearing no discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by the same sign, motion is carried. Are we about done, Jerry?
Yes, I'm so confused.
All right. So moving on to item four, public protection and ordinance. Jeff has nothing. Item five, finance. This is your swan song, buddy. Moving to the bill bills.
One second.
I will also tell you there's a bill payable to Town and Country Engineering from the twenty eighteen Utility Bond Fund that wasn't in your reports, one thousand seven seventy-six fifty-five. That was the same amount taken from the G O bond. This is from the utility bond. So the two amounts together are three thousand five hundred some odd dollars for the Town and Country.
Have a question on the bills? Okay. About page ten, I don't have mine. I forgot in my home. But Ray Ressler, there's a couple people that have their bills and.
That was a flood expense.
Oh, and so what is that? It comes out of a different account?
What's the premises? Very good. Or Ressler for two hundred and thirty dollars.
Two hundred and thirty and it's being taken from someone's accounts? Why are those on there?
It's a flood expense.
Oh.
Insurance claim, I believe.
Yeah, it's an insurance claim. It's from.
We're not getting money back from Ray or from saving lovers.
No, it's probably used just to balance or something. All right.
Sue had one question too, and I apologize for not asking in advance. Are the bill for the attorney that actually brings them, is that for the hog tussle again?
Hog tussle was on the, there's a couple other things too.
There was four hundred nine dollars and fifty cents for the flood and two ninety-two fifty was revising the A T V ordinance.
The flood was, no, the flood was the, we were told by Michelle Staff came in and said we had to redo all the S T Es. And Gary had said to check with Bill about what happens if you change someone and they've already done the work or having done the work, just to find out what we need to do to make sure that the village isn't liable for anything and we do the right thing for our residents also. So that's what the flood was for.
Any further questions?
One. I don't see too many questions, but the, on that back page there where it says a sewer utility for the check register, why are there two checks for the exact same amount with simultaneous check numbers on the same day?
During, during the audit, they realized, the auditors found out that I did not make the payment from the sewer utility into the general fund last year. And this, so it's the general or the water?
Sewer, sewer water.
Sewer water. And so I had to make both payments.
So one was a twenty eighteen payment and one is twenty nineteen issued payment.
I just, maybe it was just a.
I asked the same question.
Yeah. No.
In the same day?
Yeah.
Simultaneous checks?
Yeah.
Same money? Same, same.
Same.
Yeah. Yeah.
We have, we have a motion on the table. Do you pay the bills? One second.
Second. Yes, we have a, Les and Jeff.
Further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by the same sign. I have one announcement. We have a retiring member. It's been the guy that's been smiling through the whole, whole meeting. The first, the first meeting in three and a half years, he hasn't been antagonistic. Les, this, this last stint that Les Sanders served on the board, three and a half years, in conjunction, there were, there was another total of five years, eighty-three to eighty-five, he served on the board and again from ninety-five to ninety-eight. So you've served a total of eight and a half years for the village. And I know this last three and a half years has, has been a bit, to say the least. And personally, I've, I truly appreciate that you have me on the board. Your, your wisdom, your experience has gone a long way to help the village. Been an asset to the board in terms of your service and in terms of your residency. I truly appreciate the time that you've given in service to the village. And so with that, Village Mesa Manor presents a certificate of appreciation to Les Sanders for three and a half years of service as Village Mesa trustee from October twenty fifteen to April twenty nineteen. Now, if you bring your other two back, then we'll give you one. You'll need eight and a half years, but you're gonna have to give up the phrase.
I'm not gonna add anything to it. The commissioners are waiting. Even I get sick of hearing myself talk sometimes.
Thank you, Les.
Yep, thank you.
With that, is there a motion to, we've been by Les.
One second.
By Jeff. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by the same sign, that motion is carried. Thank you all.